Yes, Mrs. Squares.
My ladies, my lords, I was on ground five.
You were indeed.
And as I think I indicated at the beginning, it does very much depend on the parasitic on ground one, in the sense it does depend on the Cabinet being the appropriate decision-maker for the purpose of justification. And we will see in a moment, that is certainly how, at least when the judge did justification, she appeared to approach the case. So it does depend on us being correct, that this, I think, is accepted, that the public sector equality duty applied to the formulation of the charging policy, and that that was something which Cabinet is responsible for.
Can you just help me with this, as I hear you now, Mrs. Squares? What does it add then? Because if you've already won on ground one, do you need ground five? Because there must be a consequence to a win on ground one, isn't there?
Yes.
You win on ground one that it was the wrong person who took the decision, you would say, wouldn't you, this has to go back for a fresh decision?
Yes, I think that's probably right, my lady, because I think on ground five, we're not suggesting at this stage that any sort of order which requires the Councils to do anything other than consider the matter.
Do a proper job next round by the right people.
And do a proper job by the right people. I think that's right.
Okay, but we still need to hear ground five, do we?
So you're not suggesting that if you were to win on ground five, as well as ground one, anything should happen other than that it goes back to the past?
No, the way in which we put the case, my lord is right, the way in which we put the case, there are cases they put differently.
I understand, yes.
The way in which we put the case is that the failure here was for the correct decision-maker to undertake the correct balancing exercise, and the correct decision-maker was the Cabinet. And our cases, the Cabinet had to evaluate the impact of those with severe disabilities.
That's your ground one.
That's our ground one. In terms of the public sector equality duty, the error we say on ground five is that the judge didn't take that into account or appreciate the consequence of that for margin, for evidence for a series of different matters, when she then determined justifications. There's a series of authorities that say if the correct decision-maker didn't consider equality impacts, then no margin, for example.
But going back to my lady's question, do we need to hear from you on ground five?
But I don't think you do, in the sense it will be the same remedy.
Would the matters they would be directed to reconsider, or you would say consider for the first time, be effectively the same?
Yes, the impact of the policy on the most severely disabled. And the only thing I would say about this, and I will do this very briefly, is we do respectfully say that if one looks at the way in which the judge dealt with justification, it is quite clear she was treating for those purposes the Cabinet as the relevant decision-maker. And that, we say, feeds back into our ground one argument, that it's the Cabinet that had to consider the equality implications. If one goes to the key paragraphs, perhaps on the last two on justification, which is about the fair balance.
Yep.
If the court has that, ninety-three, ninety-four. We say that can...
Sorry, what paragraph?
Sorry, ninety-three and ninety-four.
Yep, that's her habit.
You say if it's a political decision at macro level, which is her phrase, then that must be referring to something other than officers.
Must be, must be the Cabinet, and we'll see. And there's a whole series of evidence of what the Cabinet is now considering when it makes those cuts. So we say precisely that, or if one goes over the page. We agree with this. Present case concerns the Council's political and administrative judgments of social and economic policy. Those are all decisions which are clearly being made and can only be made by Cabinet. And so when the judge says on the paragraph before, paragraph ninety-three, if you have halfway down, "The Council's decision in these circumstances, the needs of the most vulnerable service users in the position of the present claimant, having been sufficiently safeguarded, et cetera, must take their place along with the sacrifices demanding of all its citizens." That's simply not something the Cabinet has ever considered. And we say it does have to, pursuant to the public sector equality duty. That's the breach of the public sector equality separately, but that makes that analysis, we say incorrect. There simply isn't this decision which is being deferred to, has to take its place among sacrifices required of all its citizens. And apart from having indicated this doesn't need to be considered, I think this is now important for how we respect, how one understands ground one, because it's quite clear those are all...
It's a supporting argument for ground one.
It's a supporting argument for ground one. If I can deal with like that and then perhaps, but it then ties into the arguments we then make on the ground five, which is you don't then defer to a decision which the decision-maker has never in fact considered. That decision there described, which is the key one, was never made by Cabinet, it never looked at the sacrifices, the impact, et cetera. I do say, as I say, it is the relevant decision-maker for that purpose, for the purpose of maintaining the charging policy, which is the decision under challenge. And the reason that matters, again, is because of what it is that the Cabinet is now considering. And we accept that the Cabinet or Birmingham is facing an extremely difficult financial situation, which requires very difficult exercises of political judgment as to how the sacrifices should be borne. And what the Council's looking to do is it has a budget, or certainly the last figures we have, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, a budget of three point three billion, and it's deciding, it's looking at how it can make savings to that budget. And in doing so, what it's been told, quite rightly, is it needs to consider the public sector equality duty and the potential impact of any savings or cuts it makes on those with protected characteristics. And this, again, why I say it is the Cabinet clearly making these decisions. And if you go to page two zero nine of the supplementary bundle, you'll see this is reports to the Cabinet. Twenty-seventh of February, I think this was just before the hearing. And if you go to page two thirty...
Sorry, two thirty?
Two three zero.
So go back from two seven nine.
Oh, sorry, no, sorry, two zero nine was the start.
Oh.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Two zero is the start of this document.
Yes, thank you.
Reports Cabinet.
Yep.
This is about the savings that are needed. And two three zero, or in fact, two three, two two nine, you see heading Public Sector Equality Duty, N B. "After all the decade of significant budget savings, difficult to make new savings without any impact on residents. There will inevitably be some impact on particular groups, including those protected characteristics as defined. Council is not legally obligated to reject savings with negative impact on any particular group, but must consider carefully with rigor the impact of its proposals on the public sector equality duty, take a reasonable view about the overall impact of particular groups, and seek to mitigate negative impacts where possible. Need for impact assessments has been considered, et cetera." We say that's entirely legally correct. Cabinet's considering how to make savings, should it cut the budget to adult daycare centres, cuts to youth budgets, whatever it is, and it's rightly been told. Some of these may have an impact on those protected characteristic. Public sector equality duty requires you, when you're undertaking that exercise, to think about that impact. Doesn't mean you have to refuse to make savings in those areas, but you certainly have to consider them. And what that highlights, we say again, going back to ground one, is that it's positively irrational to be making decisions about potential cuts and savings, think about the impact on those, for example, with disabilities, without having any idea what the impact is of the charging policy. And we say, and that is, we say, is required by the public sector equality duty, et cetera. That's where you cannot make the decisions, balance, sacrifices, deal with cuts, savings in a way that is fair to all, I think the phrase was Birmingham's taxpayers and residents, without having any idea of the impact of the charging policy on the most severely disabled. Because what you may end up doing is saying, well, this particular cut would save us three million pounds, but it has this impact on those with severe disabilities, we therefore won't make that cut. But if you've got no idea, for example, that your charging policy could be ameliorated with a lesser expense, but might have a greater positive impact on those with severe disabilities. Again, we're not saying any of that's established, but that's the thinking process that the public sector equality duty requires decision-makers to undertake. So to that extent, we say the ground five, which is when one then comes to justification, we say the judge at that stage, and this, again, goes back to the way we say supports our ground one argument, is that everyone was treating the decision as being maintenance of the charging policy, but the judge's finding there, or where the judge had put it there, the council has made a decision, et cetera, is simply not one that the Cabinet has in fact made. It's never considered the matters that are there required. And therefore, we say, when it then does quite properly discharge the public sector equality duty into other matters, that it is considered. It won't have the full picture of the impact of its policies, their charging policy, on those with severe disabilities. So that's how we say, to that extent, ground five feeds back and supports ground one, but I accept that if we succeed on ground one, the matter goes back, if we succeed on ground five, the matter goes back, et cetera. If the Cabinet's aren't the correct decision-maker for the purpose of ground one, then that, then ground five doesn't work either.
And you accept you don't get to ground five unless you've won on ground one, so you do have to have a finding that the wrong person made the decision in this case?
Yes, we have to have a finding that for the purpose of at least the maintenance of the charging policy, the decision-maker is the Cabinet.
Should have been the Cabinet, yeah.
Well, again, we say the decision-maker for the purpose of that is the Cabinet. They're the only ones that can lawfully decide to change it. You have my submission.
No, thank you very much indeed, Mrs. Squares.
My lady, can I just do a bit of movement around?
I do.
Yes, my lady, I'm going to deal in our response under three headings. First, I want to address the court on what the pleaded case actually was. Second, I want to take the court to four key findings of fact, or four key pieces of evidence that were before the judge. And then third, I'm going to respond as briefly as I can to each of the grounds. So in terms of the pleaded case and how this challenge came to be and what it was the judge was determining, the court will have seen that the main focus of the pleadings, the skeleton argument, the oral argument at the hearing, was the Article fourteen challenge. The public sector equality duty was the third ground. It always tends to come up and bring up the rear, and both parties said relatively little about it. But we have seen the claim form that the claimant filed, core bundle page one one two. We've seen section three of that claim form, which made clear what it was, as if we turn it around, one one two. Section three is always the key, the key thoughts, details of the decision to be judicially reviewed. What is it? It's the claimant challenges the defendant's decision to introduce the twenty twenty-three charging policy without removing or revising the aspects of the policy which give rise to discrimination. Now, it's not whatever's gone before, it's that decision. And one then looks three point two, the key crux of it, the date of that decision is the twenty-seventh of January two thousand and twenty-three. We then have the statement of facts and grounds, which is in the core bundle page one, two, three. Ground three is dealt with in summary at paragraph nine, page one, two, six. And there, it is put somewhat differently. It is there, failed to comply with the P S E D in formulating and/or operating the charging policy. We then see how that was developed at paragraph sixty-nine, page one, four, six. Sets out the text of the section, it sets out the summary, the principles from bridges. And what those paragraphs do not do is say there was a breach of the P S E D because the reviews were carried out by officers, not council members. So that was never part of the challenge at the outset. So the response to that, the council's summary grounds, which I can't claim any credit for, those are all the work of my very learned Gina who sits behind me. Core bundle page one, five, three. Paragraph two A, that makes the point that the council informed the claimant on various dates that it is reviewing the charging policy that they are challenging, so the twenty-seventh of January policy, and considering a proposal to revise the policy in a way that will significantly reduce the claim difference in treatment. And so it was argued that the claim is premature or academic and permission should be refused on that basis. We're saying, look, we're taking another decision. Then in terms of the public sector equality duty, that's dealt with in summary under B, the P S E D challenge is out of time. Because if the challenges to the charging policy that was introduced back in the day, shall I say, two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and sixteen, any allegation that the decision-making then was deficient is well out of time.
Where are you reading from?
Bottom B one, last sentence. So that's simply the summary, there's more detail of that further on, on the prematurity point, we find out paragraph thirty-eight onwards, core bundle one, six, six. And we see how it's put there, again, making very clear there is another decision being taken and inviting either to please permission or to stay the claim. And then ground three, that starts at page one, seven, three. And the response to public sector equality duty is set out there. Again, paragraph sixty-two over the page on page one, seven, four. Mr. Danham pleads, the claim is delayed. It is unclear whether this ground claim is directed at the material decision to adopt the charging policy or the reviews and minor clarifications of the decision since. If the former, the claim is very substantially out of time and permission should be refused for the reasons set out there. And then in the alternative, leads the response, paragraph sixty-four, it says the post Norfolk review discharges it anyway, nothing to worry about here. So the claimant then files a reply, and this was the document I asked Mrs. Squares to show you, but I don't think we actually turned it up. Core bundle one, seven, seven, the claimant's reply to the summary grounds of the case says it's not enough that you're now going to take another decision, you've been saying you'll take that for a while, so we should have permission anyway. But then at C, page one, core bundle one, seven, nine, the claimant says, "The suggestion the challenge based on a breach of the P S E D is delayed is misconceived. The challenge in this case is to the current version of the policy. The council reviewed, revised and promulgated the current version of the policy on the twenty-seventh of January. The P S E D applied to the review and revision of the policy and it applies to the ongoing application." So that's what the claimant says in reply, that's what the claimant is challenging, and it is on that basis that the judge grants permission. And we see the order granting permission right at the end of the bundle, page two, one, five. Unfortunately, it doesn't give any reasons which say I'm only granted permission to challenge that decision, but that's obvious, if that's what the claimant says in reply that they are challenging, if that's the response to the allegation that it's out of time, that is obviously, we say, what the judge was granting permission to argue.
So the point of delay wasn't in any sense held over for the substantive hearing, it was just a straightforward grant of permission, was there?
There's nothing in, there's observations that start at two, one, six. And all it says is, "In my view, the claimant's raised arguable grounds which merit consideration", but the judge does grant permission to apply on the reply, so she obviously read it. My lady, I was then going to take the court to what my learned friend said in his skeleton argument and how he put the case, but he quite properly accepted that he did not ever mention the way the case is now put in his skeleton argument. So it was only when Mrs. Squares opened the case orally did he advance that argument. That was the first time I had heard it.
Which precise argument?
The argument that there is a breach of the, what is now ground one, that there is a breach of the P S E D.
Constitutional argument.
Because the wrong person...
The wrong person argument, okay.
So my response on my feet is essentially the same response we've developed in this appeal, which is you have to look at what the claimant is actually challenging, and you look at who took that decision.
Back to my lord's first question of the day.
Yes, and my lord, we've still not, no one's answered that question yet, which is to show your logic, what is the decision under challenge? And if I could do that, I went back at lunchtime to check, what did the High Court bundle say? And there is a helpful tab which says the decision under challenge. And what's behind that tab is the version of the charging policy adopted on the twenty-seventh of January. So it is the document that is in the supplementary bundle at page ninety-three.
Let's just turn that up. So just so that I'm absolutely clear, this is what you're telling us, that in the trial bundle, this document was indexed as the decision under, a decision challenged.
So I'm looking at it now, there's a table of contents, there's a tab which says statements of case, and behind that is a tab which says V C C charging policy under challenge.
Right.
And behind that tab is the document...
Is this document.
Supplementary bundle page ninety-three.
Review date, right, first of April twenty sixteen, review date twenty-seventh of January, which goes, ties in with three on the statement of claim.
And I'll show you, ladyship, in a moment, the evidence before the court about what was changed in this version of the policy. There's specific evidence on that. So just to complete this, we rely, in terms of the public sector equality duty, we relied on who was the actual decision-maker and the post Norfolk review. That was our response.
So what was the second and the...
The post Norfolk review. So the reviews that the decision-makers carried out are in light of the Norfolk decision.
No, I just didn't hear what you said.
Yes.
Sorry, the first thing you said, you said something, then you said the post Norfolk review.
The identity of the actual decision-makers.
Thank you.
And the post Norfolk review. So it was only in my learned friend's reply that he sought to introduce the scheme of delegation. So he handed out a copy of the scheme, and I think it was an entire constitution, it was hundreds of pages long, to the judge in his reply. My response was, the judge doesn't need to consider this because the claimant has never contended that the actual decision they're challenging was ultra-veryes and that it was made by officers who had no power to make it. So as a matter of fact, officers took the decision, and that is the end of the matter. And my lady, what we did say is that if the judge was going to consider the scheme of delegation, then understandably I asked for an opportunity to put in written submissions on that, because I'd had no opportunity to address it. And the judge left it as, if she was going to deal with that point, she would let us know and give permission for filing submissions, and she never did. And you've seen the way that the judge dealt with it, by saying there was no challenge to the very result of the decision. My lady, that's the pleaded case, if I can put it that way. Then in terms of the four key findings of fact, or four key pieces of evidence, if I can just outline those and then I'll go on to deal with them briefly. The first heading is the terms of the charging policy and how it has been reviewed over time. The second relates to the claimant himself, his care plan, the cost of that plan and the contribution he pays towards it. So the impact on the claimant of charging policy. The third heading is Birmingham's financial crisis and the cost of amending the charging policy. And then the fourth heading is the review that was carried out after the claim was issued and after the section one, one, four of the court had been made. So in terms of the charging policy, I've shown the court where that is in the bundle, that's the decision under challenge, supplementary bundle page ninety-three. The judge dealt with that in the judgment, paragraph twenty-seven to twenty-nine, core bundle seventy-nine. She refers to the initial version of that document that was issued on the first of April two thousand and sixteen. And she records that the council has not been able to find any documents about how that was actually adopted. It's unsurprising it was...
Sorry, I've missed that.
Oh, sorry. She records the fact that the council have not been able to find any documents recording how that version of the policy on the first of April two thousand and sixteen had been adopted. We say that's not surprising, it was nearly a decade ago, that's why we have time limits in judicial review claims.
Just for the purpose of identifying the decision, you've shown us how it is pleaded, and you've shown us the document which the claimant relies on, the recommendation documents, which were put before the officers who you say made the decision, say that the recommendation they make is not for all time, but simply not to change the existing policy for eighteen months and any way to review it again in six months.
Yes.
So it's a very time-limited recommendation.
Yes.
Is there any evidence about whether that aspect of the recommendation formed part of the decision? I appreciate it's not published, but was the actual... I appreciate it's not published, but was the actual decision simply to put forward this new charging policy, or was it coupled with at least an internal commitment to review it again in six months' time?
Well, can I show you the reviews and then answer that question?
Yeah, sure.
Because I hope that will, that will deal with it. So the initial 27th of January 2023 decision, it wasn't, the policy was reviewed in the sense that it was amended, changes were made to it. And then I think your lordship is thinking of the later review that post-dated the decision.
Yes, I am, actually, yes, you're right.
That then says.
After the section 114.
Exactly, yes. So can I take your logic to that in chronological order?
Yes, sure.
Just to make good those points. So just in terms of the, what Mr Squires describes as the, essentially the substantive policy decision, that when the council decided that it would charge and it would take higher rate disability benefits into account, that wasn't a substantive decision taken even in 2016, that was a decision taken long before that. Authorities have had charging policies for decades, and we see that from Miss Lowe's first witness statement, it's in the bundle at supplementary bundle, page 163. And it's paragraph 39. Where she says, "The version on the 1st of April came into force from that date", but about five lines down, she says, "It's relevant to note that while the CARE Act introduced a requirement to have in place a charging policy, Birmingham already had a charging policy in place which was largely compliant with the CARE Act, and so only minor amendments were made, as recorded in the report, which Miss Lowe exhibits, but for present purposes the court can just look at the extract here. It explains what the CARE Act required, and then the last sentence, "Birmingham has revised its charging policy in the light of the CARE Act, and this has been consulted upon between certain dates, and it will be effective from April 16. There were no specific responses in relation to the charging policy. I'm terribly sorry, I should have taken you to the second sentence, but further up, "The key changes to existing policy are a revised deferred payment scheme, including the provision of charging of interest and administration fees and charging for carers and prisoners." So it wasn't, that wasn't the initial decision to charge and to take higher rate benefits into account.
The 2016 one wasn't the initial decision?
Yes. I don't know when it was, my lady, because it was even further in the dim and distant past, and obviously no challenge was brought to that. And then in terms of who took that decision, we don't have the documents. The only assistance I can give is supplementary bundle, page 269, which is the document put before one of the reviews, which I'll come back to in a moment, in response to my Lord or Justice Mail's question. But just under the second heading, context, does your ladyship have that?
Yes, thank you.
It says underneath that, "BCC charging policy was last updated in April 16 by the previous head of service, Jane Pat, in conjunction with Finance and Legal. The policy has not been reviewed since, and they attach the original version of the policy." So just to make it clear, that 2016 policy, while we can't, I don't know, the only evidence that we do have suggests that was taken by officers, not by the cabinet. So what do we know about the reviews of the policy? The judge makes her findings on these at paragraph 31 of the judgment, Court Bundle Where she explains that the Norfolk judgment was handed down on the 18th of December 2020, and she explains what Norfolk did, and records my submission about the consternation that caused. And then over the page 34, one then has the summary of the reviews that the council carried out in light of Norfolk. So 33 and 35. So where are those reviews described? They are described in Miss Lowe's witness statement, supplementary bundle, page 167. She then has a heading in her witness statement reviewing the charging policy. So the initial exchanges with the claimant's legal centre, claimant's lawyers started shortly after the Norfolk decision. And then paragraph 48, "Since 2021, the charging policy has been reviewed on the three occasions as set out below." So the first review was completed in 2021. That was completed by Professor Graham Betts, the Strategic Director of Adult Social Care. He had in front of him the briefing note that is exhibited there, I'll take the court to that in a moment. And Miss Lowe tells us that resulted in only very minor changes to the policy, and a new policy was issued on the 22nd of December 2021. So that version of the policy is in the supplementary bundle, page 61. It says on the front, "Review date 22nd of December 2021." The note, the briefing note that was before the decision maker is in the supplementary bundle, page 269.
Do you want us to turn that up?
Yes, please, my lady, because this is all part of the consideration that was given by the decision makers.
This is the briefing note for the 2021 review?
So what is it doing? It is asking the decision maker to review the charging policy in light of the Norfolk decision, and addressing the disparity in how much individuals contribute towards their own care. We've looked at the context, we then see a detailed discussion of the Norfolk decision and what the court decided, namely that Norfolk's charging policy discriminated against severely disabled people, contrary to Article 14. Not just a high level summary, the decision maker is given the judgment to see the adverse impact that the court identified in Norfolk. So it says, "Please see the full judgment below for additional information." So that is given to the decision maker. We then see at the top of the next page, confirmation that Birmingham have always included PIP daily living allowances income and disregarded earnings. They've always done that, they wouldn't change in a position like Norfolk. There's then reductions for legal advice, and then it discusses areas to review and consult on. So it talks about the, it's a historic anomaly about night time support, nothing turns on it for present purposes, it would take too long to explain what it was. If we then go down to page 272, we see different options being discussed, and equality impact assessment, it says there is no EIA completed at the moment, that in light of Norfolk, it sets out, the current charging policy does discriminate between clients who have PIP daily living component compared to those who've transitioned from DLA or AA. And so recommendations at the bottom of the page about what to do. Top of the following page, 273, NFEO will be collectively looking at the outcome of the Norfolk judgment, that's the National Association of Financial Assessment Officers, so it was a national response to Norfolk, how should local authorities respond?
National Association of Financial?
Financial Assessment Officers. And then it sets out risks. And then it sets out how many cases would need to be reviewed, and how long that would And so the outcome, as Miss Lowe says in her witness statement, was that only minor amendments were made to the policy in December 2021. So we then have the second review, which is outlined in paragraph 50 of Miss Lowe's witness statement, which is at page 167. So she says, "Paragraph 50, a second review was conducted in 22 by John Williams, Senior Director in Adult Social Care." And she says, "A new version of the charging policy was published on the 28th of September 22, and there were no material changes." So that version of the charging policy is also in the bundle, that is at supplementary We then go back on, back to Miss Lowe and the third review, this is at paragraph 51 of her witness statement, supplementary bundle 167, where she says, "A third review was conducted between October 22 and January 23. The decision maker was again Mr Williams." She says, "A briefing paper was prepared and put before Mr Williams," I'll show the court that in a moment, "and she explains that the briefing paper specifically considered the impact on the most severely disabled and costed the potential changes." So it looks at the different options to reduce the impact that had been identified in Norfolk, that was increasing the MIG or disregarding the higher rate care component. And then she says, "Paragraph 52, the briefing paper also deals with changes to the council's explanation of its policy on disability related expenditure. Ultimately, Mr Williams decided to make amendments to the policy to improve transparency on the council's position on DRA, but not to make any more substantive changes. And this version of the charging policy was published on the 27th of January." That's the document, that's the decision that was challenged, supplementary bundle 93.
I can't remember what DRA stands for.
Disability related expenditure. It's one of the things that must be disregarded.
Yep, that's the thing that was increased substantially in relation to the claimant, and that apparently gets set at basic level until challenged generally.
My lord, that, my lady, that's not a description we would accept of the policy. When claimants inform the council that they have disability related expenditure, that is considered and assessed, but it's very, it depends on the individual, on their needs, on how they spend their money, so one needs to have evidence of what money has been spent.
Understood.
When that's brought to the council's attention, it's then adjusted as one would expect. So what was it that the decision maker considered in making the decision under challenge? It is the briefing note at supplementary bundle, page 275. This is the 15th of December briefing note. So the background, what is it doing? It's considering in light of the Norfolk judgment and the, I'm not going to read the name out, but the threatened legal action in this case. We then have the context.
That's reference to this case, is it?
Yes, it's this case, it's this case, my lady, so it's a reference to the pre-action correspondence of the incentive. It explains that the charging policy was updated and reviewed in September, but the claimant's lawyers were dissatisfied with that, and so a second opinion was sought. Again, the decision maker is briefed about what Norfolk decided, the very nature of the discrimination identified in Norfolk, and the decision maker is again given a copy of the Norfolk judgment. Advice is then given on amending the current charging policy, over the page at 276. So there are three, three key amendments that were made to the charging, or recommended in 27th of January, which were in fact made. So it's making clearer how the council will exercise its discretion to disregard income. And so those three statements are set out there. One is about housing costs, one is a general approach, second's about housing costs, and the third is disability related expenditure. And you can see there's a long list of examples of disability related expenditure which were added to the policy. There's then at the bottom of 278, a heading, benchmarking against other local authorities. That's the reference to the NFEO investigations, the responses from local authorities, and explaining what other local authorities are doing. So 11 out of 15 take all income into account, and no local authorities have changed their policies following Norfolk. And then there's the heading, options. So then say, see, "The council will need to consider whether to increase the amount of money that service users can retain. Two main ways of doing this, first by increasing the MIG, and second by discounting certain benefits from being included." So there are three options for the council to take. These reflect the options in the statutory guidance, they reflect the options that have been developed post Norfolk to reduce the impact. So first is increasing the MIG. Makes the point that, well, this isn't actually going to remove the discrimination identified in Norfolk, because you're still going to have a differential impact. But it sets out below what the, what income adult social care would lose if this option were taken. So we see the figures set out in the table on page 280. And then it says about tying it, a more nuanced selection would be to tie it to CPI or a benchmark percentage increase, so again, that was considered. And then a second, bottom of page 280, a second option is to see what other councils are doing. They're not changing their MIG rates, this may be the best option for Birmingham. Then option two is to disregard the high rate care component for all clients. So that would allow service users more of their own money to spend, and it would be slightly more targeted, because it's targeted at those who are more severely disabled. But this would still have a significant effect on the amount of money that the council would be able to recover in charges. Then it sets out what they recover at the moment, there's the night element, which we'll go over that. And then over the page 283, there's another more nuanced option, to consider disregarding the high rate care component for all disability related benefits unless we're paying for night care. Again, the numbers are considered in the table below. And then if, towards the bottom of the page, proposed total weekly deductions for those, if we disregard the difference in the benefit, what's the cost? Cost to the directory is £1.7766 million if they did that. So what does that mean? The council's ability to generate income to fund its provision of social care, this is not money that goes into the council's coffers, it's used to fund adult social care. That means it would be limited, reduced by 1.7 million, this is a substantial amount of money, especially when taken in the wider context of corporate financial pressures. And this decision again doesn't deal with the Norfolk issue. And then we have option three, which is do nothing, retain the existing policy. What's the benefit of that? It maximizes the amount the council is able to collect in charges from service users, this is a very important consideration, given the pressure on budgets. What's the disadvantage? Service users are left with less of their benefits. Those who are more severely disabled and unlikely ever to be able to work will not be able to supplement this income, and so may experience greater hardship than those who may at some point in their lives be able to work. That's the impact that my learned friend relies on. There it is being plainly set out for the decision maker. There's then a heading, risks, some of which has been redacted. Recommendations, say, "Review the charging policy," and I think, my lord, this comes back to my lord's question, that is not, "Let's review it again in a few months," that's saying, "Review the charging policy in light of the recommendations of the amendments to..."
No, what I was thinking of was the later one, as you pointed out.
My lord, I'll come to that in a moment then. And so that's, that's the, what was considered for that third review.
What, so I don't understand what, "Review the charging policy" there means, it means think about what you want to do with the charging policy in light of what we've just said in the briefing note?
Yes, and what was then? Yes, and what was then done are the changes that were recommended in the briefing note. So it's not saying, oh, let's put this off for you and think about it again, it's saying, change it. There's the bit that's redacted, I don't know why, but that's what it says.
Change it according to, was there a bit in this briefing note that said you can change it in little ways, but short of the options?
Yes, that's all the...
Oh, the first, second stage, the other one.
First, second, third stage.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and those are the changes that we then see in the twenty-seventh of January version of the charging policy. So who took that decision?
So although it refers the decision-maker to the Norfolk case, it doesn't recommend changes to address the, as it were, the fundamental Norfolk problem.
It considers them.
Yes.
And it explains why it's not...
It doesn't recommend changes.
Yes. And so who took that decision? Miss Lowe tells us that was Mr. Williams. That resulted in the twenty-seventh of January version of the charging policy. That's the decision that was challenged. I'm going to come back, if I may, to the post-issue review at the, as item four on my list. If I can do item two quickly, what's the impact on the claimant? And the judge deals with that at paragraph thirty of the judgment, core bundle page eighty. And she also deals with it at paragraphs ninety and ninety-one as part of the balancing exercise, core bundle ninety-seven. So thirty, it's taken the maximum amount of visage by the statutory scheme, or taken all benefits except those excluded by the scheme or protected by his personal MIG. And then we see ninety and ninety-one, core bundle ninety-seven. We see that the severity of the impact on the claimant is not set out evidently with any real clarity. And she says, the statutory scheme of local authority duties to assess and meet adult social care needs, of national benefit entitlements and of controls on the power to charge, displays a coherent and integrated structure which contains at many points checks and balances to safeguard and protect individuals with severe disabilities, no earning power and private income. And then ninety-one, the claimant's eligible social care needs have been identified and assessed and are being met. They're being met in ways which give the claimant a substantial dividend in terms of quality of life and social interaction, and the rest of that paragraph. He's provided with benefit income at personally calibrated levels which are addressed to his enhanced needs and expenses which are intended in specific ways to be used for exactly the purposes for which they are being used, to pay for those enhanced needs to be met and those expenses to be covered. So it's a tailored exercise to his situation. There's no clear or evidence case on comparative affordability or sufficiency of disposable So all this needs to be met, the detail of that is in the care and support plan, I don't think the court needs that, but if you do, it's in the bundle at supplementary bundle two four eight. In terms of what financial impact does it have on the claimant, there was a lot of evidence in lots of different places in the High Court bundle. So what I did was prepare the note, which is in the supplementary bundle at page fifty-seven, which brings all that together in one place. So the first page is the, I lift, that is lifting the text from the explanatory notes to the regulations, and that explains that the levels set out in the MIG in Regulation seven reflect the applicable amounts for the underlying benefits, and an additional amount in respect of each child, together with any applicable premiums, in each case together with a buffer of twenty-five percent. So essentially, the MIG is calculated by reference to the underlying benefits with a buffer. And then over the page, I did the calculations for the claimant's, the claimant's benefits and the disregards. And so what this document showed the court is, first column, what's the benefit, what's the purpose of the benefit? Next column, what's the weekly rate of that benefit, so what does the claimant receive? Then what is disregarded by the MIG? And then how that impacts on the claimant. So taking each element in turn, we see he keeps the entirety of his universal credit standard allowance, which is designed to meet his subsistence expenses. He keeps almost the entirety of the universal credit limited capability for work-related activity allowance. And the purpose of that benefit is set out as well. This all comes from the claimant's evidence, by the way, so this is how the claimant's solicitor describes the purpose of these benefits. It's not my description, but we agree with it, but that's where it came from. So what's the purpose of that? To contribute to higher living costs due to disabilities when you can't supplement your income from work. So the claimant keeps almost all of that. So the only thing that's disregarded, the only thing that's taken into account is three pound thirty-five of universal credit. Then over the page, we have the PIP mobility element, which must be disregarded, so the claimant keeps that in full. And then the last element is the PIP daily live-in element, which is designed to make a contribution to additional costs relating to disability, and it's non-means tested. So the amount is in the next column, the disregard is the disability-related expenditure, so expenditure you incur because of your disability is disregarded. And so the only sum that is taken into account with the PIP is forty-one pound thirty-eight, that remains to pay for the care and support services provided by the council, which are meeting his needs arising out of his disability.
Got a bit confused on that last bit, can you just go over that again? Which bit does he keep and which bit does he not keep of the PIP daily live-in element?
The disability-related expenditure is sixty pound thirty-seven.
Yeah.
So that is disregarded, he keeps that.
Keeps that.
And then the only thing that's taken into account is the forty-one pound thirty-eight of PIP daily live-in, so whatever's left.
Of care and support services.
Provided by the council.
Yeah.
Which are in and of themselves meeting his disability-related needs. So the maths is then at the bottom of that page, sets out his total income, what does the council take into account, and that's how you get the figure of twelve point eight six percent. So that was the exercise that we had to go through to work out what the impact was on the claimant. And my learned friend is suggesting for ground two, that that's the exercise one has to go through for some eight thousand other residents in Birmingham.
Well, to be fair, I don't think he went as far as that.
Well, but my lady, that's, that's the only way you can do it, to calculate what the impact is of the charging policy on a particular individual, and I'll develop that when I get to ground two, that's, I'm just flagging that at the point there. My heading, turning then to my heading three, which is Birmingham's financial crisis. The judge made findings about this at paragraph thirty-six to thirty-eight of her judgment, which is at the core bundle at page eighty-one. And she's set out the position as at January two thousand and twenty-three. So already, there was a very bleak prognosis as to its likely ability to set a balanced budget, and the budget gap was predicted to be around eighty million pounds. Then, the situation deteriorated still further by the fifth of September two thousand and twenty-three, so this is paragraph thirty-seven, when the council was forced to issue a notice under section one one four of the Local Government Finance Act. And that is essentially the nuclear option, local authorities for bankruptcy, and the projected deficit at that point was eighty-seven million pounds. But also with the equal pay liabilities and computer issues, it was essentially a huge shortfall for being able to balance the budget. And she finds at paragraph thirty-seven, the consequence was a decision to impose radical spending controls and the cessation of all non-essential expenditure. But even that wasn't projected to solve the problem. And we then go over the pages to the findings of what happened next. Central government intervention, best value commissioners sent in to oversee the council. And the judge quotes from the report on the twenty-seventh of February, and I'll show the court this report in a moment, that the council's in an extremely serious financial position, explains the problems, but this budget highlights wider and significant financial pressures and a fundamental structural collapse of the twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget. It's not just equal pay liabilities, it's not just computer systems, fundamental structural collapse. So what had to happen, so the council had been provided with one point two five five billion, that's not a typo, that's how much exceptional financial support they needed, but that is a loan that has to be paid back through asset sales. And the commissioners identified a narrow path to financial sustainability dependent on making revenue savings of two hundred and ninety-three million pounds in two financial years. As well as that, they were given permission to increase council tax by nine point nine nine percent, that's double the normal, and at the same time reducing services. And what did the commissioners say? And I'll show the court in a moment. There are no other choices available. That's not even the council saying it, that is the commissioners saying it, that have been brought in and appointed by the Secretary of State. So those are the findings the judge made. The section one one four report is in the bundle, supplementary bundle page two eight five. That provides more detail about the catastrophic financial situation the council was in. Paragraph two explains why the section one one four report is being issued. So its equal pay liability is, its audit, its projected deficit, I put D, a projected deficit of eighty-seven million for this financial year, there are not sufficient financial reserves, concerns about the speed and effectiveness of existing mitigations. We then see at paragraph five, the purpose is to make it clear to members that immediate steps must be taken to mitigate the financial consequences of the equal pay claims, there must be a route to bringing the general fund back to a positive position, and that needs an appropriate savings plan. Paragraph nine provides, sets out the key issues. So B sets out the, paragraph nine, B sets out the forecasted overspend of eighty-seven million pounds. That was reported to Cabinet on the twenty-fifth of July. And then in, at the end of that paragraph, in the interim period, a series of mandatory section one one four-like spending controls have been in place across the council to restrict exceptional spend. So progress...
Sorry, where are you reading from?
Totally sorry, my lord, the end of B, nine B, the last two sentences.
Oh yes, thank you.
In the interim period.
Thank you.
And then the consequences of the section one one four report are set out at paragraph ten. What has to happen? Elected members must by law agree to seize all non-essential expenditure and reduce the council's operational and service delivery costs immediately. Financial controls are exercised by a section one five one spend control board, it will be chaired by the one five one officer. And then what do those controls mean? You can't enter into any new agreement or commitment for expenditure until full council is met to consider the one one four report, and these controls may be reapplied after the full council meeting. And then temporary measures are now enforced such that all non-essential expenditure will now stop with immediate effect without written confirmation from the section one five one officer. And then five, little Roman five, spending controls will now remain in place for the foreseeable future with a financial recovery plan reported to full council on a quarterly basis moving forwards. And then, little Roman eight, if they're not adhered to or do not achieve the required outcomes, a further section one one four notice will need to be issued. And we then see paragraph thirteen, to enable the council to cover the costs of any future loans, budget savings would need to be made. And then to address this challenge, the council has A, implemented mandatory spending controls for all non-essential expenditure. So it's not just the, section one one four means you have to pause until there's a full council meeting, but what this is saying is, it's not just until then, the section one 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 officer had implemented those spending controls for all non-essential expenditure So no new agreements or commitments for all expenditure, including revenue, workforce, and capital, can be made unless specific criteria are met. And then there needs to be, developed a robust budget savings and recovery plan. My lady, then the day before the High Court hearing, the Cabinet approved the council's draft budget for the financial year twenty-four to twenty-five. And we see the, the judge refers to that at paragraph thirty-eight of her judgment, which we've just looked at. And the, the document that the judge is quoting from is in the supplementary bundle page two oh nine, which is the commissioner's review of the draft budget. We see one point one, the council's in an extremely serious financial position as a result of the past decisions it had taken. There is a narrow path to financial sustainability that will require both discipline and pace for both members and officers. We then see one point four, the loan from the government that must be paid back through asset sales. One point five, narrow path to financial sustainability is dependent on the revenue budget being balanced within two years, and that sets out the level of revenue savings that are required. And then one point six, as well as delivering this budget, the council needs to work on the next budget by identifying, starting to implement further savings to address the overall budget gap. And then one point seven, the real work of delivery needs to take place with discipline and pace, there are no other choices available. Miss Lowe's second witness statement deals with more of the detail of this document, it was a very lengthy budget, as one might expect. She's highlighted the key points in her second witness statement, supplementary bundle page two oh five, where she also emphasizes that C and C through to E, that fees and charges are one of the four main sources of funding for the council's budget, that future demand for adult and children's social care is forecast to increase. And E, adult social care makes up around thirty-nine percent of net expenditure. And as well as, as part of the, G, as well, as part of the savings programme, the adult social care directorate has to seek to save over twenty-three million pounds in twenty-four, twenty-five, and fifty-two, a further fifty-two million in the next financial year. My lady, then my fourth heading is the further review after the claim was issued. So after the twenty-seventh of January, the council continued to keep the charging policy under review. And if I could ask the court to turn to supplementary bundle page three nine three, this is a pre-action protocol letter, but it sets out what the chronology of, of what was happening. This is a pre-action protocol letter, but it sets out what the chronology of, of what was happening. So 395, the second full paragraph starts the policy dated 27th of January. So I should say this is the letter from the claimant solicitor.
Sorry, where am I looking?
395, second full paragraph, the policy dated 27th of January. Does your ladyship have that? Towards the top of the-
Got it, thank you.
So that was sent to the claimant solicitor on the 1st of February. And the complaint is made that only minor changes were made to it. And they're asked to confirm if there have been three changes to the document, which was then confirmed. And then the bottom of the next paragraph, in an email dated the 27th of February, you then stated, Birmingham is actively considering further changes to the charging policy in light of the cost of living crisis and anticipates bringing a further paper to the adult social care management team in mid-March. This will involve consideration being given to disregarding some or all of the higher rate care component. And then this, this pre-action protocol letter was sent. And the response from the council at 397 was an email from those instructed me to the claimant solicitor on the 6th of April. Last paragraph says, as I mentioned previously, my client is actively considering further changes to the charging policy in light of the cost of living crisis. And the proposal is to disregard higher rate disability benefits. This is a proposal at this stage, there's no timeframe for this at present. And then Miss Lowe explains at paragraph 53 of her witness statement, supplementary bundle, page 168. That there was this further review of the 9th of January. And this review was provisionally, 168, my lady, do you have that? 53, this review was provisionally agreed by Professor Betts and Mr. Williams, so the officers, that to be implemented, the change, the proposed change of disregarding higher rate disability benefits, would need to be approved by cabinet, that's always been accepted. But then Miss Lowe goes on to say, however, in September 23, following the issuing of the 114 notice, the provisional decision was revised. The decision makers at this time were Professor Betts and Mr. Williams. They considered a briefing paper which proposed to reduce charges for those on higher rate disability benefits and made a recommendation. But in light of the current financial position of the council, Mr. Williams and Professor Betts have now decided to delay the review of the charging policy for a further period of approximately 18 months. But will revisit this decision in six months to reflect on any changes in the council's financial position. I think, my lord, this may have been the point that my lord was putting to me and under review. So what is the exhibit referred to in that paragraph? The exhibit is the, there are two brief, there's a briefing note at 293 of the supplementary bundle.
This is a briefing note for Betts and Williams when they're looking at whether to, what they should do about, they're in September 2023 by now, are they?
My lady, that's right. And there is a briefing note and a pack of slides, and I'm going to show the court both of those.
Could you give me the page number for the briefing note?
So the briefing note is at supplementary bundle, page 293. And the slides follow on directly from there. So we see at the, at the top, background. So in January 23, these policy proposals were brought to adult social care and were discussed as a response to the cost of living crisis, and this was provisionally agreed. And then it says, following the meeting, it was proposed we would relook at the proposals in line with the equalities agenda. And this paper is being brought to reconsider this. But since the paper was redrafted, the council has issued a section 114 notice. And the proposals will now need to be considered in this context. And it then refers to the claim, this claim, which has by this point been issued. It refers again to the Norfolk case and the discrimination that was found in Norfolk. And then there's a lot of reductions there, but over the page, there's then context. So talking about the review as a response to the Norfolk ruling. It describes the current policy underneath that reduction. And second sentence after the first reduction, the effect of this is that some of the most severely disabled individuals may be paying a higher proportion of their total income to the council in charges than those who are less disabled. This group of citizens is thought to be around 1,193 in Birmingham. Then underneath the second reduction, those who are profoundly disabled, who are fortunate to find themselves in paid employment, will face the same amount of charges in most cases. But because they're able to work, they can increase their income above benefit levels, therefore affording them a higher standard of living when compared to those who cannot increase their income by other means. Again, the very impact that the claimants should have been considered here it is. And then it says, we're proposing a review of the charging policy, which if agreed, would introduce a near-level playing field for those dependent on local authority-funded support who are reliant on benefit income only. Again, we see the options being set out, but the option under consideration here is option one, disregard the high rate care component. So that, what's the impact of that? That would allow service users to keep more of their disposable benefit income. The statutory guidance and the costing is then set out. And at the bottom of page 296, it sets out more detail of the option, what will it do? To consider disregarding the high rate care component. And then it gives a figure for all disability-related benefits unless we're paying for night care. This will show consistency, this would mean the most vulnerable in society have more disposable income in addition to the standard mid rates. We then see the num, the table over the page shows the number who are likely to be affected. We then see the proposed total weekly deductions and the cost of that to the council, so the total annual deductions from all benefits, 1.76 million pounds. The second bullet point is that that's not a one-off cost to the council. Those changes will be applied every year. They don't take into account new clients coming through the door. And this figure will rise annually along with the expected increase in packages of care as our population in Birmingham increases. It is fair to assume that our potential loss of income will rise exponentially year on year, unless we specify this is only a 12-month temporary arrangement. And then the bullet point underneath that, given the current section 114 notice, it may be unwise to introduce changes to our charging policy at this time, as this would require some form of consultation from councillors, which is imminently likely to move to commissioners. And this involves political sensitivity at the time the council is under scrutiny for its spending decisions. And this proposal represents a significant loss of income. So that's the rationale, we were going to do it, it was being advised to do it. The section 114 changes everything fundamentally. And the advice then is, you can't do it, you should not do that at this time. And then option two is do nothing.
It's not entirely clear from that paragraph whether it's, you shouldn't do it, or more bluntly, you can't do it.
Yes.
I mean, can you clarify that? Is this, this is a decision which, at this time, is for the council or for the commissioners?
Well, my lord, at this time, this is a briefing to the officers. Officers are considering, should we make the recommendation? Should we, should we refer it out that people do decide that you should change the substance of the charging policy and disregard the higher rate care?
And we know, and we know that that's something they don't have authority to do because it has to go to the cabinet.
Because of the balance.
But, but when it gets to the cabinet, does it then have to go to the commissioners who can simply say no?
Yes.
So it's not even, not even a cabinet decision at this stage.
Well, one has the fundamental financial constraints, the spending limitations that I showed the court in the section 114 report. Those were enforced at the time, so all unnecessary expenditure was prevented and prohibited. So what we're looking at here is, it is unnecessary expenditure because it's exercising a discretionary decision under regulation 152 to forego income that the council would otherwise be entitled to receive. So what the officers are being told here is, there's a 114 notice here, this is not the time to do this. Because it's a discretionary decision, it's unnecessary, it's not necessary expenditure.
So this is a briefing note, so it's not the decision, it's the recommendation to the decision makers.
Yes, so that's the advice that's being given to the decision makers, who are Professor Betts and Mr. Williams. They make the decision, September 2023, are we going to go ahead with this proposal or not? And over the page of that briefing note, 298, it sets out the second option, which is do nothing.
Yes, well, the reason I was asking is that the judge talks about making a political decision at macro level, as if, as if it is for the council to balance elimination of discrimination, helping the most vulnerable people to have more of their income, et cetera, on the one hand, against the financial problems of the city on the other. But if, if it's not even their decision, and the commissioners have said and are entitled to say, no new, no new discretionary spending, full stop, then that's, that's a slightly different case, isn't it?
My lord, this is a very point that the judge put to me at the hearing. And perhaps I can deal with it the way I dealt with the judge. If it is necessary expenditure, then it could be incurred. So if they were required to do this in order to avoid a breach of Article 14, it would be necessary expenditure.
No, that's gone, we're not concerned with that, we're concerned with the public sector equality duty. And they, and they only have to have regard.
Yes, but my lord, when one is, when one was looking at it at that, I can't, it would have been very easy for me to have said they would, they could not have spent this money, that would have been the absolute end of the case. Everyone went home very early. That wasn't how I put it, because if it was necessary to spend the money to avoid a breach of Article 14, it would have been necessary expenditure. So I can't say that because of the 114, they couldn't spend this money.
No, I entirely see that for Article 14, yes.
But my lord, the decision was, it was being made at the same time. So I can't say for the public sector equality duty, they couldn't spend that money. But I can say that when we're considering the three equality needs, one has to consider them against the context of Birmingham's financial crisis and the existence of the section 114 report.
Yes, but this goes to the section 31, 2A point.
Exactly.
Under the public sector equality duty.
And that's why we say the judge dealt with it very shortly, because it was blindingly obvious that if one had carried out, done whatever it was Mr. Squires wanted the council to have done, the same result would have been reached because Birmingham was in a position of absolute financial crisis. It did not have 1.7 million down the back of the sofa to have made this happen. And so, my lady, just to finish this document, there's then the heading recommendations. So the first bullet point is to support our most vulnerable clients. But the second bullet point is to, the implementation of these proposed changes should be delayed by at least 18 months to April 2025. We're not quite there yet, but the financial circumstances are not much better than they were. And then the last bullet point is, the proposal should be reviewed in six months, given the current spend controls. And further consideration should be given to the proposed implementation date. And I informed the court on instructions at the last occasion, it had been reviewed at six months, there was still no money. It was still not going to be implemented. And my lord, over the page 299, we then see the promised PowerPoint slides. And it's headed reducing inequality, that's what it's considering. Makes the point, it was provisionally agreed. And then since the paper was redrafted, we've got the 114 notice. Sets out the back, over the page, sets out the background to Norfolk and the current claim.
Sorry, I've, I've just missed an acronym, what does ASC stand for?
Adult Social Care M and A D. Over the page, it does reveal some of council's advice, but one can see why that has been left in. It's essentially saying, you've been advised that the policy is lawful and Norfolk doesn't set a precedent for that, the judge agreed. It then sets out the grounds in this claim, including the public sector equality duty. And it says, last bullet point, agreed, Birmingham will go ahead and challenge the policy where advice will not receive an outcome until January 24 at the earliest. Whichever outcomes issued will be going to or taken to the Court of Appeal with an expected resolution date of around April 2025, so my lady, no pressure at all. But whoever had the crystal ball was doing very well.
Been a bit premature.
Yes. But then the slides go on to talk again about the different options. What's the cost of the option that's under consideration? And it refers again to the section 114 notice. And then option two is do nothing. And then the recommendations over the page, so they're reflecting what's in the briefing notice essentially.
Who are these slides for? The original document is for Mr. Williams, are these slides for somebody else?
I understand that the slides went with the briefing pack. I've not been told they went to council members, I would have been-
I think my experience as Chair of the Judicial College is very often one gets PowerPoint slides, effectively as your briefing or as the substance of the information that is going to be communicated, as opposed to an aide for lectures.
Yes, that, that's, that's my understanding.
Certainly found it very confusing at the beginning.
Yes.
Thank you.
But I think, I was looking back at your, mind notes anyway, of your submissions, that the September exercise, all of this was, the review was to be by officers.
Yes.
Do we know, or Betts and Williams make the decision?
Yes, Miss Lowe says that decision is made by Betts and Williams, who say, we'd like to do it, we've got no money to do it, we're going to delay this until April 2025.
They didn't give up hope.
Which, well, my lady, yes, it may or may not be tied into the estimated date of the Court of Appeal hearing. And so, my lady, those were the, my four headings. So if I can turn then to the grounds of appeal. There are three key points I wish to make in response to Mr. Squires ground one. The first is that one has to start this analysis by looking at the terms of the PSED. Now, we all, we've all seen it so often that we just say, oh, it's the PSED, we need to comply with it. But in this case, I think it is, it is important to look at what the duty requires. So it's in the authorities' bundle, page 20. Now, for those who have tabs, they have tabs on it. So what does the duty actually require? Does my lord have that?
Yes, thank you.
So it's section 1491. It is that a public authority must, in the exercise of its functions, have due regard for the three equality needs. So the duty is imposed on any public authority when it exercises its functions. So this section says nothing about who the decision maker has to be. Section 149 says absolutely nothing about that. The duty is imposed on the public authority. And it is for the public authority's own internal constitutional arrangements to decide who is exercising the function. Once one has identified who is exercising the relevant function, then that person must have due regard to the three equality needs. There's no concept of a relevant decision maker anywhere in the statute. There's no concept of a relevant decision maker anywhere in the statute. So for, when the public authority is a local authority, the relevant person will be identified by the local authority's constitution. Who has the power to exercise the function? The function is akin to the decision. The challenge here is to the decision. The decision was initially as pleaded 27th January 23. I've shown the court the subsequent decision, which the court was also examining, that below. Who is taking that decision? Who's exercising that function? It is the local authority officers. Now, Mr Squires accepted in his submissions that the actual decision maker was the officers. And he accepted...
That isn't, that isn't what I'm accepting.
Mr Squires doesn't accept it, he can say without in his reply. But my submission is, the actual decision maker was the officers. And Mr Squires certainly did accept that under the constitution, those officers had the power to take the decision that they took. They had the power to take the decision under challenge. And they did in fact do so. The fact that they could have taken a, or they might have taken a different decision for the one they actually took. The fact that that might then have required them to do something else under the constitution, refer it to the Cabinet. It's all very interesting that it is neither here nor there for the purposes of this claim. Because that is not the decision that they actually took. That is not the decision that is under challenge. My second point is that Mr Squires is seeking to invoke the public sector equality duty to say that Section 149 requires a different decision maker to discharge this duty, discharge the public sector equality duty. But we say there's absolutely nothing in Section 149 that requires that. And what he was very keen to do throughout his submissions is to introduce what he says is a relevant decision maker for the purposes of Section 149. And he said that has to be the person with the power to ameliorate the discrimination. Now, we say there are two fundamental problems with this. First, common ground that the public sector equality duty is non-delegable. But one has to ask, what does that mean? What that means is that the actual decision maker must have regard to the three equality needs. So as Hunter demonstrates, and that's all it demonstrates, is that if the actual decision maker is the Council Cabinet, someone else can't discharge the public sector equality duty. So unless they've actually read the Equality Impact Assessment and considered them, then what officers have done is neither here nor there. That's all that Hunter stands for. Absolutely tried standard proposition. We don't dispute it for a second. What Mr Squires is sought to do, and perhaps if I can ask him to take up his skeleton argument.
Are you still on your first problem?
I'm on my second one, my lord. I'm sorry, did I...
You said there are two problems.
Oh, sorry, yes, I'm on my first problem, under my second heading.
Yes.
Yes, all right.
If I can finish my first problem, then I'll go to my second.
So this is the non-delegable nature of the PSCD.
And how about saying...
Turning to his skeleton argument.
Of, this is my skeleton, page 20. You can see where perhaps this concept of relevant decision maker is coming from.
So we're looking at paragraph?
10C, my lady, bottom of page 26. So the way it's put in writing is that the PSCD is non-delegable, and so they're no issue about that, and must be discharged by the relevant decision maker themselves. And that's followed by a quotation from Bracken. The relevant duty is upon the minister or other decision maker personally. Of course, we agree with that. What matters is what he or she took into account and what he or she knew. Thus, the minister or decision maker cannot be taken to know what his or her officials know, or what have been in the minds of officials in the presence of their advice. So the relevant, in all the cases, is about the duty, the relevant duty, i.e. the duty in Section 1491. It's not purporting to identify a relevant decision maker. There's no such concept of a relevant decision maker in Section 149. It seems that there's been some sort of attempt to align these two concepts. The only concept that has any authority is the relevant duty, which is a reference to 1491 itself. And it is the person who takes the actual, who exercises the function, takes the actual decision, who must have regard to the three equality needs. That, we say, is what occurred here.
They can't use their officials as some sort of external hard drive.
Exactly.
In fact, in that quote, you could delete the word relevant, and it would still mean the same thing.
Yes.
Yes. One goes back to the statute, and one looks at what the statute actually says and what the statute actually requires. Well, that's the end of my first problem. My second problem
Thank you very much.
is that Mr Squires says the decision maker has to be the person who can ameliorate the discrimination. And we say that's not what Section 149 requires, because Section 149 is not about a substantive determination. It is a process duty. One simply has to have regard to the need, to, ah, due regard rather, to the need to eliminate discrimination.
So you said it's not 149 says, it's not a...
It's not a substantive duty, it's a process duty. So it's not a duty to achieve a particular result. The duty to eliminate, or the duty not to discriminate is in Section 29 of the Equality Act. Section 149 is a process duty. One simply has to consider something, consider the need to eliminate discrimination. And my lady, the second part of this is that Mr Squires assumes that there was discrimination. One has to ameliorate discrimination. But what one can't get away from here is that the judge has found there was no discrimination. So one stands back from it and says, well, what is one supposed to have had regard to anyway? There is no discrimination here. We know that because the judge has found that.
Well, she might have found that there was, but it was justified.
Well, my lord, it's only discrimination if it can't be justified.
Well, it's only unlawful discrimination if it can't be justified.
Well, my lord, I'd probably say it's not discrimination at all. One has prima facie, prima facie, particularly when one's looking at Clamino's discrimination. It's only discriminatory if it can't be objectively justified. The judge has found it was objectively justified. There is no discrimination here. And then, my lady, my third point, underground one, is one has to look at what did the judge actually decide? And what the judge actually decided on the public sector equality duty is that it was discharged by officers as part of the post to Norfolk review process. Subject to ground two, then there's no challenge to that finding. On the facts, that is what the officers considered. I've shown the court it in some detail, so the court can see exactly what was before the decision makers. And we say that was clearly enough to discharge the public sector equality duty. So my lady, moving then on to ground two. And the, even if it could be discharged by officers, did they do enough? I summarised, but that's essentially the argument. My first point underground two is the nature and extent of the due regard duty. And my Lord Justice Miles may recall the Sheik and Lambert case, which is in the authorities bundle, tab 31, page 1127. I'm afraid I only have it electronically, so I don't know which hard copy volume that is.
Tab 30...
31, my lady. Does the court have that?
Thank you.
So we can see from the headnote what this is about. The local traffic authority making experimental traffic orders under the Road Traffic Regulation Act for three low-traffic neighbourhoods in this area to give effect to Covid guidance. And it restricted the movement of vehicle traffic in those parts of borough. The claimant was severely physically disabled, unable to use public transport, and dependent on her car. And she contended her life had been made more difficult by the introduction of this low-traffic neighbourhood for the reasons set out in the headnote. And the challenge was on the basis that the local authority hadn't considered the consequences for her when making the experimental traffic orders, and had failed to comply with the public sector equality duty. And the judge dismissed the claim, holding, although the decision maker had not at the time of the decision been aware of the detailed findings of the Equality Impact Assessment, he'd given enough consideration to equality objectives to qualify as due regard. And then, under the held heading, dismissing the appeal, it was clear from the authorities that the concept of due regard was highly sensitive to the facts and context, and that the intensity of the regard necessary to satisfy the duty would depend on the circumstances of the decision-making process in which the duty was engaged. And then we see, let us see over the page. The court has to take care not to apply to demanding a standard in establishing whether the due regard duty was discharged when these particular decisions were made. And if I can then take the court to the substance of the decision, which starts at paragraph 10 on page 132. In almost every case that one picks up on the PSCD, attempts some kind of summary of what the relevant principles are. But that is set out there at paragraph 10. They make the five points that are relevant here. The point I just made, Section 149 does not require a substantive result. Second, it does not prescribe a particular procedure. So it doesn't mandate the production of the Equality Impact Assessment at any particular moment or indeed at all. It's a duty of reasonable inquiry, is the third point. And fourth, it requires a decision maker to understand the obvious equality impacts of a decision before adopting a policy. And that refers to Bailey and Brent. And fifth, court should not engage in an unduly legalistic investigation of the way in which a local authority assessed the impact of a decision on the equality needs. And that is citing the judgment of Lord Justice Davis in Bailey, which I'll take the court to in a moment. And then, if I could ask the court to move on to paragraph 15. That follows on a citation from the End Violence Against Women Coalition case in paragraph 14, and the judgment from Lord Justice Burnett, oh, Lord Chief Justice Burnett. And paragraph 15 says, implicit in what was said in End Violence Against Women is that the statutory provisions must always be read as they are.
You say that's a bit rich after five paragraphs summarising various principles.
Well, my lord, I would never dare make such a statement. But my lord, the second sentence from there is, the basic issue in every case should be a simple one. Whether the authorities had due regard to the needs identified in 149. Cites from Lord Justice Elias in Hurley. And then the observation should be qualified by the approach of this court in Bailey. And the last sentence, the decision maker is concerned with the obvious impacts on equality, and not with the detail of every conceivable impact.
So saying you'd have less money at a time of a cost-of-living crisis. You'd say it's a crystal-clear, simple summary of what they needed to think about.
Exactly. The detail of that was set out in Norfolk. Norfolk was given to all of the decision makers through the actual judgment. They saw what the disadvantage was, that they are keeping a lower proportion of their income than others. That's the disadvantage that lies at the heart of Norfolk. So what does Mr Squires say should have happened over and above what did happen? And in writing, it was said that they need sufficient evidence of the impact of the charging policy on those who are severely disabled and unable to work. On his feet, I think Mr Squires put it somewhat differently, in that there needs to be some sense of scale and some sense of impact. And one says, well, there is obviously a sense of scale, there is obviously a sense of impact in the documents that I've shown the court. But my third point, most importantly, there is no universal impact of the charging policy on a severely disabled person who's unable to work. And why is that? And that is because of the way in which the charging regime works. And the judge made various findings about that in the judgment. If I can give the court a few references to this. So paragraph 15 is where the analysis starts. Where the judge explains that the benefiting income is nuanced.
Sorry, paragraph 15?
Paragraph 15. So that sets out the general power to charge, and you've got to carry out an assessment of the individual's financial resources. Then paragraph 16, the authority may not make a charge if the income of the individual would fall below an amount to be specified in regulations. She refers, this is the MiG. The way the MiG is worked out, which is set out in Regulation 7, it is a relatively complex mechanism. It varies from individual to individual, and depends on factors relating to age and family circumstances. It also factors in disability at two levels, depending on severity of disability. At each level, a disabled individual is allocated an enhanced MiG. Then at paragraph 17, she goes on to say that the regulations make important provision about how an individual's income is to be assessed in the first place. So first, what, income that cannot be taken into account. So first, it's earnings from employment. So one has to look at, well, is someone earning at all to calculate the impact? Then, subpar two, the disability-related expenditure. That is going to be, that is going to be different from individual to individual. Depends on what the individual's needs are, and what they spend their money on, the choices they make about that. So that has to be disregarded. And then, the ability element of pay. So paragraph 18 summarises how that is all that works in the claimant's case. And I've shown the court already paragraphs 90 to 92 of the judgment that's looking at the impact on the claimant. And I've also shown the court the table that was produced for the High Court, supplemental bundle 57. And that table shows the careful and detailed analysis that is required to work out the precise impact of the charging policy. In that case, it was on the claimant. But one would need to do that for every individual, because that's the only way you can work out what parts of their benefits they keep, what parts they don't, how much money they're actually left with, and what proportion of income that leaves, is taken in charges. So what that shows, what I say that table shows, is that one needs to know the exact details of an individual's personal circumstances to know how the charging policy impacts on them. to know how the charging policy impacts on them, and to know what proportion of total income is paid by way of charges. So it will vary, and I'm going to give a long list of features here, but it will vary depending on the age of the individual. It will vary depending on whether they are single or part of a couple. It will vary depending on whether they have children. It will vary depending on what benefits they get, so what universal credit allowances they get, and what expenditure they meet out of that, including housing costs. It will vary depending on the level of disability-related expenditure that each individual has. And it will vary depending on the level of employed income that each individual has. So we say that simply invoking, as Mr Squires does, some sense of scale, some sense of impact, one can't do that without doing the exercise that we had to do at the High Court level to show the impact on individuals' benefits and the impact on the proportion of income that they have. So how many people are likely to be affected by this? What's the nature and extent of the investigation that would need to be done? So the counsel, the appellant puts this in a skeleton argument, "The counsel provides non-residential social care to 8,885 adults. 850 of those have been assessed with a nil contribution, so don't pay for the service." The reference for that, my lady, that's in our skeleton argument before the High Court, supplemental, supplementary bundle of page 41, paragraph 23C. So the only way one could get a sense of scale or sense of impact is to do the type of calculation we did for YVR, to do that detailed analysis of each individual's circumstances for all of those 8,000-odd adults who are being charged for receiving non-residential care. And my lady, what we say is that that would be a wholly disproportionate exercise when one considers the time and resources involved to do that, and the fact that the adverse impact, i.e. that a higher proportion of income is taken by way of charges from the severely disabled and unable to work, that adverse income, sorry, that adverse impact is well-understood. That was well-understood by the decision makers.
I mean, I completely understand the point that that adverse impact is well-understood, but if it were the case that you really needed to go further, it would be perfectly possible to take a sample of 100 people or a lesser number than 8,885, which would give you, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it would tell you.
Well, that's the point, what would it...
Or what the difference between doing that and doing it for everybody would tell you. But it's not necessarily everybody.
Well, one, one goes back again, I'm sorry, keep going back to the statute. What does the statute require? "Have regard to the need to eliminate discrimination." So you have to look at, well, is there discrimination? If there isn't any discrimination there at all, what are you having regard to? There's nothing there to have regard to. But even if it said you need to have regard to the impact, well, one knows the impact. The adverse impact is, as we've said it is. The adverse impact was spelt out in detail in the Norfolk judgment.
Well, that's the point, which I just said to you, I understand.
Yes.
Of your challenging your, as it were, backup submission, that you would need to do it for absolutely everybody.
And my lady, I agree, one could well do a sample, but what is that sample going to tell you that you don't already know from the terms of the Norfolk judgment and what the...
Are you saying it wouldn't, it wouldn't tell you anything because of all the huge numbers of variables you've set out?
Exactly. Because you take a, how are you going to know that your sample is picking the right, the sort of extreme edges?
People can work out that sort of thing, statistics.
Beyond me, my lady, but perhaps they're right. But, so I suppose that the point is, the impact was set out in detail in Norfolk, the proportion of income that is taken from those who are severely disabled and unable to work. The Norfolk judgment was given to the decision makers. It was explained to them, they considered it. We then have the exercise that one has to go through to identify what the impact is on YVR, shown the court. And then the numerable number of variables that exist in trying to work out what the impact would be on any given individual. The key point is, those who are severely disabled and unable to work are likely to pay a higher proportion of their income in charges. Whether that is 10%, or 15%, or 15% to 20%, it does not matter for the purpose of this justification exercise. One realises, one knows what the adverse impact is, the nature and the scale of it. And we say that was enough. My lady, I'm in the court's hands. I think I will be quick on grounds three, four, and probably five. I can probably finish if we sit for, say, 15 minutes?
I think we can sit for 15 minutes, but we do need to reply. And I know that my lady needs us to rise at 4:15. So it's a matter of whether you finish yours and we do reply in the morning, or if you feel rather rushed, we might rise a little early and conclude in the morning.
I will probably be quicker if I have overnight to condense it down even a few.
Fine.
Is that all right?
Yeah, perfect. As long as you don't tell anyone, we're rising at 4 o'clock.
A lift's a seal, darling.
Two terrible things for our productivity. Yes, I don't think we need to sit at 10 though, because we're not going to be very long. I don't suppose you're going to be very long in the planning room. No, thank you all very much indeed. 10:30 please.